All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our Palmdale City Council meeting. What I'd like to do is call the meeting to order. And then I'm gonna ask somebody to lead us in a pleasurable teaching. Where's my volunteer? He's right here. If you'd like to come forward, if you'd all please stand.
Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Thank you. Who can remain standing? Let's go along to silence. Okay, thank you. If you'd, I'm gonna come back and let you introduce yourself. You left us on the pledge, and we appreciate it. So if you'd please introduce yourself. West Moon.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jaycee Rocha. I attend Highland High School.
Very good. Let's go along to the panel. Okay. Out of three on our agenda is roll call, please.
Mayor Ledford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Correa.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffbauer.
Here.
Councilmember Bentoncourt.
Here.
Councilmember Bishop.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. All right, out of four on our agenda, presentations. And then we have a couple visitors today from our animal control shelter. So we're gonna invite them to come forward and introduce your opportunity to adopt. Probably didn't think you were gonna adopt when you walked in, but you might be possessed to want to adopt. So, please introduce.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Jesse. I'm from the Palmdale Animal Care Center. And tonight, I brought Demi. She's an 11-month-old miniature, uh, Pinscher, Doberman Pinscher mix. Mix I don't know with what. It was more Dolby than anything. But she's a really sweet dog for her age. Uh, still, uh, puppy-ish. But during her evaluation, she did really well. In cage evaluation, she got a five. In, uh, stare test, she got a five. With an overall score of 10 and a grade of A for in cage evaluation, which is very good. And she is, she is very good. Uh, social interaction, she got a four. Sensitivity, that's a lot of touching and stuff that we do or the officers do to see how they are and how they react. She got, uh, a four. Food aggression, she got a five, which is really good because you can just pull the ball away from her and she won't snap at you. Uh, resource guarding, she got a four on there. But then again, you know, when you're hungry, I think you'll bite too. Or try to bite. Dog to dog, uh, we didn't score her on dog to dog, but she seems to be just like a puppy. Very interested in another dog, you know, so she is with JD over there. But the overall score, she got a 17, which is a B. So it's pretty good for a Doberman. She came to us as a stray, so we really didn't know much about her. And, uh, just playing with her today, I thought it was gonna be a challenge. One, her being a Dolby, and two, being a puppy as well. But, uh, she did very well. She knows some basic, uh, training. So I was telling her to sit, and she did sit. She did stay. And, uh, very, very, uh, food motivated. So I was giving her treats when she would do her, you know, when she would obey the commands. So she'd make a great house pet. With an active family who likes to be outdoors and, and, uh, jogging maybe or just playing outside, she'd probably get along very well. They're great watchdogs. Uh, they usually get committed to one person, but in a family, probably get committed to the whole family. Growing up, I had a Doberman. It was a police dog, actually. And that dog, when my baby sister was born, it's like he attached himself to her. Everywhere she was, he was. And, I mean, it was surprising because he slept under her crib. That's how attached that dog was to my little sister. But, uh, they do, they do, uh, very well in a household. And I also have, Myra, come on up.
Your second opportunity.
This is Myra. She is, uh, one of our young volunteers, and she brought JD. Come here. Come here. She brought JD with her today. So we brought two for the price of one. Go ahead. Give him your, give him your spiel.
Um, JD is three years old. He's a Maltese. He loves being in the playground. He loves running around, and he loves being around people.
Also JD became homeless today. Uh, owner surrender. So he is up for adoption. And, uh, as you can tell, he's, he's got a pretty calm demeanor. He can act, uh, wild sometimes too, as we saw in the cages with other dogs passing by, but that's just being in a cage situation. He does like to wander. I think that's why he came back, because he wandered too much. But, uh, it's a really sweet dog. I mean, you can see his demeanor. He's pretty quiet. He likes being on your lap. And, and he's ready to look for another good home. What? You wanna talk? Anyway, um, Demi here also was part of our playgroups. Uh, we do have dogs playing for life at the shelter. And it's mostly for the dominant breeds, the Pits, Shepherds, and Dobies. She did very well socializing with other dogs in a playgroup as far as in a play environment. So she does get well with other dogs. You know, proper socialization and proper greetings, she would be very good.
Okay. Well, ladies and gentlemen, here's again, opportunity to find pets, wait for the right No takers, right? Actually, we have adopted a couple out of these council meetings, so it's not like winning the lottery, but it's, at least every now and then, we got one, right? So anyways, it's just our animal shelter. It's here in South Antelope Valley, and we're just trying to create a culture of support and working together and, you know, there's a lot of people that care a lot about animals in our valley. So this is a great opportunity for you, if you're one of those people, to maybe involve yourself in the animal shelter. So we appreciate you guys coming in, and thank you. And we'll see you again next month, right?
Right.
All right.
Be here.
Take care.
Thank you.
All right. I'm looking for... I wonder if we have everybody here for Devil Pups? Yes?
Everybody here.
Very good. Well, then I would suggest, let's go into the Devil Pup presentation. And so what we have are some certificates of recognition to remember the Devil Pups and the Devil Pup Eagles. Ladies and gentlemen, we've done this, uh, for a number of years. And Devil Pups is just another great organization for young people to be involved and to learn and a little bit about themselves and prepare for life. And they do a fabulous job. We get to work with the same individual every year that seems to have control over the group. Not gonna mention who he is.
Thank you.
I think you're ready, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna bring them forward individually and introduce? Or what's your plan?
Uh, my plan is first, I'm gonna introduce General Harold, and then we'll be...
That's important.
Yeah, we'll do him first.
Okay.
And then we'll do the Devil Pups, and then we'll do the, uh, guest speakers, and the award presenters, and we're out of here.
We're good. So you wanna take the mic?
General mic, but...
If you do, you're lucky.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Mr. Lewis. I'm the liaison representative for the Marine Corps Youth Program, known as Devil Pups. I've been doing it for about 20 years, and this is another great class of students, graduates, and I'm very proud of them all. Uh, but tonight, we have a very important guest, as far as I'm concerned, and all the military people here. When you get a general to come out to speak to the kids, that's big. So I take it great honor to introduce General Harold, California Army National Guard. Ready to talk to the graduates here a little bit?
Can everybody hear me? Uh, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, parents, proud, extremely proud parents, I'm glad to be here, and it was great to be invited. You're basically looking at the next generation of sheepdogs. Yeah, there's three types of things in the world: sheep, wolves, and sheepdogs. And it's at your age that we're looking for sheepdog pups. So it kinda ties in with Devil Pups. Okay? You have now had a chance to see what selfless service to the nation and your state and your community is. You got a little taste of it. I also can see by the fact that we have junior ROTC cadets here that you're already thinking of more. It's important at this stage in your life to start thinking of the future. Because we have Naval and Army Academies, and I've got all the academies, have parents, listen to this, 100% scholarship at the academies.
General, if I could take an opportunity to introduce Isaac Barcelonah with our Congressman, Steve Knight's office. He is your academy connection.
There we go.
So just learn to introduce that, but it's an opportunity.
Now, the other thing, there's other routes. I had no backing except for this man's dad. I was an orphan, dyslexic. Another uncle let me stay at his house, three hots and a meal. I didn't have to pay rent as long as I was in school. I was commissioned in the Marine Corps Platoon Leader Class Program, which is a program that's not junior ROTC. It's not ROTC. It was originally designed for children of Marine enlisted personnel back in the 50s. And that's how I got my commission in the Marines. Junior College to Cal State Normality in the POC program. And yes, I'm an Army general. It's a long story. I'm not gonna go into it. But the bottom line is, you've now had a taste, and you know what it's gonna take. First thing, you gotta get up in the morning. And morning ends at 07:00. Okay? You gotta do well in school. Because I don't care whether you're gonna be a rifleman or electrician in the service or even in the civilian world. If you're not good at your job and you haven't studied it, you're not gonna be making it. Okay? The next is you gotta work. Because none of this, Mom and Dad are gonna send me to school, because you're gonna work and you pay for yourself, or you're gonna get a scholarship and do it through ROTC. And then the entire world is open to you. But you've had the first taste, okay? It's not an easy one. It's one that requires commitment. No matter what service you go in, if you're not committed, you won't be successful. And the fact that y'all completed the Devil Pups, one of the most stringent youth programs that we've got, indicates to me that you've got what it takes. So ladies and gentlemen, what I'm looking forward to is your enlistments or your commissions. And you're for the moment to call me in, and I'll follow in there for them. Group!
Sergeant Cheryl.
Group! Come on. What, are you guys quiet or something? Group!
Group!
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
On my command, I would like all service personnel, veterans, uh, those in uniform, first responders, uh, please stand at attention for the general.
Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. First off, give a hand to our first responders and the service personnel. And these are the next generation that we're gonna pass to baton. My son is currently overseas in the 18th Cavalry, doing his job in the Greater Middle East. It's gonna be a long road and a long fight, and you're all gonna be involved in it, whether you're in uniform or not. Thank you.
Thank you, General.
All right. The next thing we wanna do is we'd like to honor all the guest speakers. If you are a guest speaker this year, please come down and line up right down here. If you are a guest speaker, come on down. Let's hear it for the guest speakers, everybody! All right, now what I need is I need the award presenters to line up right about over here, because I'm gonna send a cadre of a bunch of grateful people coming your way. Okay, take about four or five steps this way, please. There you go, that's perfect. Okay, now we'll call out all the Devil Pups that graduated, all the Devil Pups that made it through our program. They'll start here with the mayor, go right down the line. They've been waiting for this, they've worked hard for this. They had 12 weekends of training, they had 10 days at Camp Pendleton, and then a couple more weeks of training at, uh, our place at Quartz Hill, at Resurrection Luther Church, where we trained. Anyway, great. I'm really proud of everybody. First one, Herb, student at Quartz Hill. Go right down the line. Achoa! Achoa goes to Quartz Hill. Anaya goes to Antelope Valley Hive. Arcega attends Periclee Hive. Cortez goes to Quartz Hill Hive. Cortez was the only male that scored a 400, a perfect score on the physical fitness test. He went up against 250 other males. But we did it again, like always. Telvera goes to Antelope Valley Hive. Turner goes to Antelope Valley Hive. Rocha attends Highland Hive. It only took me 10 weeks to learn to say your name. Now I feel French. Penzerella and Balasteros attend Antelope Valley Hive. Rodriguez attends Quartz Hill Hive. Rodriguez has already signed up and is in the process of enlisting in the United States Okay, Devil Pups up! Bring you down this way just a little bit, get a few pictures. Bring it this way. Rodriguez, bring it this way. Bring it this way. Rodriguez, come down here in front of him, in front of everybody.
There you go.
Okay, parents, I'm gonna give you 30 seconds to take the picture. The clock is ticking. We're on 15 right now.
You're not good at math.
This is your 2018 Antelope Valley Devil Pups.
AV!
Now, the other thing we like to do is we like to coin the presenters. Their work for our program is big time. These awards aren't cheap. These awards aren't just something you get out of the gun machine. This is the real deal. I've had so many of my Devil Pups over the years use these to get jobs, get into police academies, whatever. And they can't believe how these, uh, awards are able to be good year after year after year. And I greatly appreciate all the effort and everything you guys put in to help us out. You have to be good? I'm good. All right, presenters, let's hear it for the presenters, right here.
I think you can hear me, right? Can you hear me? I can hear it. Um, I just recently had an opportunity to spend some time with Eric in, um, our office. And, uh, I, I think the general said selfless service. This is a man that understands selfless service. He is so committed to this program, and he is so passionate, and I learned so much from spending time with him. It's truly an honor to be here and to be able to participate. And we just really, the supervisor really wanted to recognize Eric for his many years of impacting the candidates as the head liaison representative, California Antelope Valley Detachment, Devil Pups Youth Program for America. And recognition of his dedicated service to the affairs of the community and for civic pride demonstrated by numerous contributions for the benefits of the citizens of Los Angeles Yes.
I'd like to thank my daughter, who does all the Facebook page. I'd like to thank my wife, that does all the paperwork for me. Thank you for this. I don't know what to say. Thank you. I'm dumbfounded. I, I feel like I don't deserve it.
Well, I can't believe you're dumbfounded.
Okay, award presenters, go sit down.
You know, this program doesn't happen without a leader. We know, and we recognize your leadership. We appreciate you. And again, this program is really, I need your labor of love, because you've really done it year after year after year. And you're right, this is our future.
That's right.
So after we've been best prepared, you're doing it.
We're doing it. We're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. You said they're gonna vacate.
All right, we're gonna continue now. And, uh, I guess, Mr. Lewis, you ever had a queen, Devil Pup Queen?
Uh, no, but I'll, I'll be more than happy to have one next year.
All right. Maybe you got one in the room here.
Uh, that's what I was saying.
So we're gonna take an opportunity to introduce, uh, Ms. Rancho Vista and her court. So what I'd like to do is to call them forward, if they come up and... So ladies and gentlemen, this is our Rancho Vista Court. This is our queen, our Miss Rancho Vista, Junior Miss, and Little Miss Rancho Vista. And they've, uh, this is their year. So we've already seen them out and about in the community, doing great things. And the beautiful thing about pageantry is, it really does give young people a good experience and a good foundation on life, because they get to see it all the time. And you've seen a lot of, sure, your short tenure, but that certainly is an eye-opener. Why don't we move down a little bit?
Definitely.
Get behind that podium. And so what we wanna do is take an opportunity to introduce these young ladies to the community. And I'm gonna start off with Kayla Wetterland. Did I say that correct?
Yes, you did.
Very good. And so this is for you.
Thank you.
And what this certificate says, the City of Palmdale would like to extend this expression of our pride and... And what this certificate says, the city of Palmdale would like to extend this expression of our pride in your accomplishment on being, in your case, we are honored to have you represent the city as you perform community service, attend community events, and serve as a role model to young women. And so, this is now for Kayla Benson, our junior Ms. Rancho Vista. Congratulations. She has the same name as my granddaughter. She's my first encounter having the same name. And then we have Lillian Burrow. Maria, okay, our little Miss Rancho Vista. Congratulations. So, ladies and gentlemen, here's our court. I'm gonna allow them each maybe to give us a few words of wisdom. So, Ms. Rancho Vista.
Hi, how's everybody doing tonight? Good? Well, like I said, I am your 2018 Ms. Rancho Vista. And let me tell you, it's been a lot of work. I've just completed 264 hours of community service just in the month of July. I'm very proud to say that. It's been a really great time getting to know these girls, getting to know my community a lot better. Rancho Vista, we're still growing and it's all thanks to the city of Palmdale. You know, we've been opening more places such as Escrow, recently opened here on Palmdale Boulevard. It's been a real process and I'm here for the journey and I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Alright, junior miss.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for coming. And I really don't have that much to say.
She's honest.
But I know it's really hard to become a part of the community, but I know different ways to become how and it's great to become a part of the community. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lillian and, um, thank you for...
Thank the mayor for putting you on the spot.
Thank you for letting me help the community and do everything. And I'm really happy to help. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is our Rancho Vista queen. So, let's give another Palmdale good job. Welcome to the team. We'll see you in a year. You'll be completely developed as far as a queen. You'll have a whole different attitude. So, looking forward to that as well. So, thank you, ladies.
Thank you for having us.
Alright, here we go. Let's now start our agenda. Item five, this is waiver for full reading of resolutions and ordinance. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, order. Alright, this is item six. This is the consent calendar. And this is the public's opportunity to make comment on the consent calendar. Which means this is seven one through seven fourteen on your agenda. That is the consent calendar. We could enact it all at once. However, this is your opportunity to give us a reason to pull an item for consideration. Yes, sir.
Jason Zink, I want to pull seven point eight and seven point nine, seven point ten, and seven point eleven. First of all, I just wanna state that I don't think the mayor should have the right to vote on anything on this agenda. I think it's very simple for you to show proof that you did not receive any funds or that you disclosed funds from Arrow and that you did not vote on something that Arrow benefited from or would have benefited from. With that statement, on seven point eight, the naming of Avenue Inn and Lee Emery Avenue, I have no objection to that. I think it's a wonderful thing. I think it's great for the Veterans too because it kinda honors the veterans. I'd like to see maybe a monument on the shopping center on 50th and Inn because a lot of people don't know who he was and what his story is. And I think we could do that and maybe the shopping center owners would pay for it. But also, we need to, I find it shameful that we haven't named anything after Martin Luther King in this community of Antelope Valley. Someone who every day woke up and didn't know if he was gonna get arrested, he wasn't, he was gonna get beat up, or he was gonna get shot. And I think it's shameful that we don't have a monument to Martin Luther King. I also think it's shameful that we don't have a monument to Ms. Bosworth, who was the mother of the G.I. Bill, who served on United Ways Committee for probably twenty years and was the LA County Library Representative probably for twenty years. And so, we should think about that. And also, the lady who lost her life, the only woman in Antelope Valley who lost her life serving in the military. There's no monument to her. So, something for you guys to think about. And I think maybe something by the courthouse, Martin Luther King, Fourth Street or Fifth Street East, I forget what it is, could be suitable since a lot of justice things go on at the courthouse. On these other things, on the Amargosa Creek, these, all these road projects, there was no attachments to show maps or anything what these projects look like. We're always in the dark, I feel. I feel like you guys have become the most untransparent city council to ever hold office. Because it's just, it's ever since Partey became city manager, there's less and less disclosure of what's going on. And there's less community groups and there's less participation from the community. And I think, you know, last year, you spent probably an hour talking about a $75,000 refrigerator for the saves program, right? Here we're approving tonight, six million, nine million, ten million dollars for these projects. And I guarantee you, you're just gonna vote on them and there's gonna be no discussion. The public's not gonna know what the projects look like, how they benefit the community or anything. There should be posters of what these projects look like, just so we can come early and look at them. I mean, simple things like that.
Sir, you're out of time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on the consent calendar? Alright, seeing none. City council, anybody wish to pull an item for consideration?
Yeah, seven point ten.
Okay. Or a motion?
Would you approve the balance of the consent calendar?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, order. No objection. Let's go to item seven ten.
The reason I pulled that item is because I want to express that I support purification projects in the city of Palmdale. This project, the improvement on Technology Drive, those have a landscape component. And again, I'm all for making our city more appealing, more beautiful with landscaping. But I'd like to ask staff to look at two basins on the east side that have had a car accident appears like. There's a basin on Avenue RM forty-seven and Rock Lane and RA. And the one on Rock Lane and RA, I brought that to the staff's attention. And as I understand, that's a failed LMD. There is like three or four courses of block that need to be repaired. And the same thing on Avenue RM forty-seven. Driving by this weekend, I noticed that. And it's just a one that's turning into a broken window theory where you start seeing not well-maintained basins and then suddenly we have another one. And it happened this weekend on Avenue RM forty-seven. If we could, Mr. Purteef, find some funds to make those repairs. I understand that there is a failed LMD on the one on Rock Lane and RA. But if we can find a sizable amount of money to do repairs on an LMD on the other center, on Technology Drive, I think that we can afford to make those repairs on those basins on the east side.
I would suggest maybe the key to this would be the insurance for the people that hit those walls.
Yeah.
We need to make sure we have a police report.
I asked that question and staff was not able to find an accident report on the one on Rock Lane and RA. I'm not sure the one on RM forty-seven, but they appear to have been in car accidents. And those are questions that I asked staff to look into.
There's a process for that.
I think too that with these, with these basins also, I think there's the issue that the LMD may be failed. But at the end of the day, it's whose basin is it? It's kinda like it's our basin. So, I think we gotta kinda fix the basin. Maybe we're not gonna dress up the landscaping and stuff that's around it. But I think that, you know, the basin repair, I think that that kinda need to look at that. But anyways.
We would hold the owners of the home responsible, so, you know, we would have to take responsibility for our own property too.
We are. But again, insurance will pay for that, which would be the preferred tactic.
Would I move to approve that item?
Second.
We got a motion, we got a second. Any other discussion? I want to say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimous, really no objection. Alright, let's go now to item eight. Eight one. Item eight one, this is a resolution CC two thousand eighteen dash zero five eight.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Tonight before you, we have resolution number... Tonight before you, we have resolution number CC two thousand eighteen dash zero five eight. Let me read the resolution. It's a resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of documents related to the Ritter Ranch and authorizing actions related thereto. And staff is here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council, please? Don't see any. Let's go ahead and call for public comments. Anybody here wish to make comment? If you may really come forward, give us your name for the record, please.
Jason Zink, regarding the Ritter Ranch, I'd like all the council members, the city staff, the city manager, drive up to Ritter Ranch and go look at, cross the bridge and what do you see? You see ugliness. This project was done in the, designed in the eighties and nineties, just like Rancho Vista. Substandards, not today's standards, not something you would see in Santa Clarita, Porter Ranch, any other master plan community in Southern California. They've got block walls, sidewalks, no landscaping. You look right up, soon as you hit it, you see this ugly substation. I want you to go to these developers and I want you to say, "We'll waive all the fees and everything, we're gonna redesign this and make it look nice." No, you say no, but yet, it was your problem. You're the reason Palmdale looks so ugly. In my opinion. And there's no byways or nothing, no landscaping or nothing. This is probably one of the ugliest cities I've ever, when you drive all the other new cities in Santa Clarita, Palmdale looks like the ghetto. So, I would just like you guys to go to, go up there, take a drive, look at it, and tell me if this is something you'd be proud of. That's it.
Just so the audience knows, we haven't received a completed project up there, so these are not ready to be accepted as a...
The roads are in.
Yes, sir.
There's block walls.
Hello, my name is Brian Reilly. And I just wanna let Moncarillo know that if you can denounce what your campaign manager has told me before I came here, that where I need you to care and see my family safety and...
This is specific to an item on the agenda. And I, you have a right to speak, but this would come more as a public comment period, which will come up later in the agenda. This is specific to this item on the agenda, the Ritter Ranch project.
So, let's, just so people know, as we go through each item, the public gets to speak on each item. And then when we're done with all the items, then we have public comments where you can talk about anything you want.
So, your comment actually would be better...
Mrs. Spock.
Thank you. Alright, who else would like to speak? Alright, seeing none. It's not a public hearing, but, so we don't have to close it. So, council, let's talk or make a motion?
Moving to adopt resolution number CC two thousand eighteen dash zero five eight, second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Discussion? I think we'll do a voice vote on this new business stuff.
Mayor Ledford?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bentecourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Very good. Let's go to item eight point two.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. The item before you is award of project number five nine one B, Upper Amargosa Creek turnout and pipeline project in the amount of six million, thirty-six thousand, five hundred to Nicholas Construction, agreement number six three seven nine. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, questions from the council? Alright, seeing none. How about a call for public comments? Anybody wish to make comment? If you may really come forward, give us your name for the record, please. Yes, sir.
This Amargosa Creek park project, Jason Zink, it's been on the books for what, fifteen years? We've just had a, what, a four billion dollar bond measure, state bond park measure that passed. And Lackey, Assemblyman Lackey and Senator Wilk didn't get one direct dime of funding for this project. It could've. The people of Palmdale will be paying on these state bonds for forty years and receive no benefits because of our do-nothing state Assemblyman and state Senator. But what's worse is that the city of Palmdale did not bring it to their attention and pushed them to get direct funding for the city of Palmdale. The reason Palmdale looks so ghetto and so ugly is because you guys do not work together, form citizens committee, and talk about the problems. And there's no vision or strategy plan. First of all, why would you have a park project? Why wouldn't you have this going all the way from Twenty-Fifth Street West all the way to Trader Joe's? So, people could walk up and down the wash into a park and trees, make this a lifestyle community? Why can't we be like Santa Clarita? Why do we have such low standards? We need a breath of fresh air. We need to look at things differently. We need new people, we need citizens committee, and we need to not vote for Tom Lackey or Senator Wilk.
Again, for the public's information, this is a state grant that we have received and by collaboration with all the agencies in the Antelope Valley. So, this is truly a community project. It's gonna be fabulous. And anyway, I just can't allow a statement, non-factual statement to stand. Sorry. Alright, anybody else wish to speak? Okay, seeing none. Council, any discussion?
I'm going to approve item eight point two.
I second it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Last discussion before our voices vote.
We have a very narrow window by which to get into that aqueduct, the staple of law. So, we need to move on. That's all due diligence. This is just the first of many steps to improve that overall Amargosa Creek area, so...
Mayor Ledford?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bentecourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Very good. Alright, let's move on to item nine, appointments. Nine point one.
Mayor and council, the item before you tonight is the appointment of city manager Purteef to the position of representative at large to the North Los Angeles County Transportation Coalition. And to determine the length of the term, attached to the staff report is the joint exercise of powers agreement in which it lays out the membership. And at this time, the current council appointments are councilmember Hoffbauer as delegate, business representative councilmember Bishop, alternate mayor Pro Tim Correa. The meeting locations shift between Palmdale, Lancaster, and Santa Clarita. At the July tenth, two thousand eighteen city council meeting, an item was placed on the agenda for the recruitment of a representative at large to fill the vacant position. After council discussion regarding appointing city manager Purteef as the representative at large, a motion was made to stop the recruitment and bring this item back for consideration of the appointment of city manager Purteef. Staff makes no recommendation.
So, I got a question. So, are all the city managers in the NCTC members, active members?
City manager Bozigian is an active member, but Santa Clarita city manager is not.
Any other questions? You know, the typical makeup was not our city managers. And I'm not gonna really talk against Jim Purteef sitting on this board because I think he needs to be because our city Lancaster city manager's sitting on the board. So, I think that's quick for a quote. But the whole point of a diversified membership is to bring in a private sector individual, you know, a TAC member and an elected official, and we have chosen, both cities have chosen to have all elected officials and city managers, so. And maybe that's important at the very beginning of this new formation, this JPA, because I think the liability of the JPA is really lack of depth as far as working the regional transportation projects for the last twenty, twenty-five years. So that's the vulnerable point here, and I think we need to pay attention to strategies that are paid in the past and we're gonna pay in the future, and that's where that longevity and depth of understanding the transportation agenda is very, very important. So we continue to leverage, continue to build toward our, our goals of what these projects represent. And so I'm gonna buy into the membership, even though I think this is something we want to review here, and maybe a year we'll come back and re. Our city manager actually may have more important things to do with this time, but we shall find out soon enough. So that's kind of my two cents and.
I would, I would, I would actually agree with you on that and say that if someone is ultimately interested in serving there, right now we're, we're trying to dig in on a lot of, a lot of issues with the new JPA, and that if somebody's interested, I would suggest that maybe they start coming, learn what's going on over there, and, and look for that visibility for when we come up and take another look at this. You know, probably, like you said, maybe in a year, so. I think that'd be a good idea, so. But I move to.
Two more comments.
No, I'm sorry.
Any other thoughts by the council at this time?
I think that's a, I think that's a good approach.
All right. With that, I'm gonna call for any public comments. Anybody wish to make comment? You merely come forward, give us your name for the record.
Jason Zink, just for the record, there was no direct funding to Antelope Valley, any community in Antelope Valley, from either Assemblyman Lackey or Senator Wilk. They both voted no on it, they're playing political games. So you're wrong to say that they got any funding for Antelope, direct funding. That means Amargosa Creek, ten million dollar direct funding, if it passes, they get the money and pay. Okay, now let's go to this transportation thing. I would like to nominate Richard Loa, because I don't believe Partee has the skills or talent to look out for us. Richard Loa was a former council member. He's very much involved, he's attorney. I think he'd be a good person, and he'd have outside views where people could approach him. People don't feel comfortable approaching Partee.
Could you mention your real name?
Huh?
Jim Partee.
Partee, what is it?
Jim Partee.
Partee.
Jim Partee, you've got a first name.
Jim, okay, City Manager Jim Partee. For instance, I can show you mistake after mistake after mistake Partee made. Just like the fourth district planning commissioner wasn't even put on the website for over a month. Until I said something today, he would have never been on it. How can you overlook that? I can't understand how city staff can overlook that. They don't look out for each other as a team.
Do you have something about this item?
Yeah. My point is, we need outside access, we need a fresh view. I don't like how you guys have a group, and then nobody knows what's going on. There's backroom stuff probably going on, maybe it's not, but the appearance is the lack of transparency, the lack of citizen involvement. You guys say you can't engage the, the community, but yet, I've given you ten different ways to engage the community. Why haven't you took me up on one? Why don't you sign people up on, to like Facebook? You know, at, at community events?
Can you come back to the item?
I'll come back to the item. I don't like Partee representing us, because I think Partee doesn't have the skill or talent. And I would like someone from the outside to represent the city of Palmdale. That's not a part of the council, it's not a part of the administration, but a part of the community.
Have you considered maybe going to the NCTC and expressing your views?
You know what, I get really upset about all of you, is that when Supervisor Barker has a quarterly transportation meeting, you don't post that on the city website or on Facebook or anything. So nobody knows what's going around. The public's invited, but how do we know what's going on? Like I said, you can have the best cheeseburger in the world, but if you don't advertise it, nobody's gonna walk in that door buying.
Have you considered going to a meeting and expressing this to the NCTC board that's actually making the policy?
Where, where is it?
Well, if you just explained it.
There was two different things that he was talking, he was talking about that supervisor summit, but that's not our meeting, that's her meeting.
It doesn't matter. Don't you want the community involved? Of course, it's on their website, show me on their website.
All right.
Show me on the city website where it is.
You know, I appreciate that, but we're out of time. Anybody else wish to make comment? All right, seeing none. Council, back to us. Discussion or motion?
I think Richard would probably do a good job, but I, I think that right now we're at a very formative stage, and we need to get over a lot of technical matters right now. And I'd invite him to start coming to the meetings, and if he's interested in the future, he can express that interest and might make a great spot for it, so. But I move to go ahead and make that appointment of Mr. Partee to the, to that position.
For one year? I'm sorry, for one year?
For one year.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, yeah, for one year. All right, so we have a motion?
We review one year, okay.
And a second. Any other discussion? How about a voice vote, please?
Mayor Ledford?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bentencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
It's unanimous for the appointment of City Manager Partee for a one-year term.
Excellent. All right, let's go to item nine point two. Appointment of a council member to the Antelope Valley Transit Authority to fill the vacant delegate position. Any staff report?
Mayor and council, this item before you tonight is the appointment of a council member to the Antelope Valley Transit Authority to fill a, the vacant delegate position. On May seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, Councilmember Bishop resigned from his appointment as the city's AVT delegate due to a time conflict, which has created the vacant delegate position. Meetings of the AVT are held on the fourth Tuesday of each month at ten AM at the AVT located at four two two ten Sixth Street West, Lancaster. The current council appointments to the AVT are Delegate Councilmember Hoffbauer, Alternate Mayor Pro Tim Correa, Alternate Councilmember Bentencourt. Staff makes no recommendation.
Okay.
All right, well, anyways, we need to have that position filled there. We have the ability to appoint a, as the supervisor does, a resident that can also function as an alternate, but we can't take that step until we have a council member that formally accepts that spot. So I'd again like to ask, you know, Mr. Correa, if he can accept that position. We need to juggle schedules to make this work between all the members there, but we can't, we can't maintain a empty position and an empty, you know, spot there, so. That was, that's why I wanted to bring that up.
That'll be fine, I'm willing to accept the decision. I wanted to serve a different board last council meeting, but it wasn't approved or appointed. I'll be happy to represent the city of Palmdale, the AVTA. It's only once a month before the act of use, I believe, that I can do that. If nominated, I would accept it, and I'll do it by council.
Okay. And then, so I, I'll go ahead and make that, that.
Hey.
Recommendation.
We'll, we'll get there, we're not there yet. Any other thoughts? I'm gonna call for public comment. Anybody wish to make comment? Merely come forward, give us your name for the record.
Jason Zink. I think that's good, wants to represent. The only thing I would like you to do on is I would like you to push the AVTA and Barker, Supervisor Barker, to actually appoint a town council person who's on the town council, one of the Antelope Valley town councils, to take over her appointment. There's one that works for Edison, I forget her name.
Okay.
But she, she lives in the city. We need to support our AV town councils. These places are becoming poverty, they're becoming. They look bad. And we need these people that are on the town council volunteering to be represented, so those communities have input. These, these places are sitting gold mines. If, you know, these are job incubators. Court Hill could be another Lancaster boulevard, if you guys supported that. Right now they don't even have a town council. I'm telling you, Antelope Valley is going backwards from what it was.
It's unfortunate that they hold these meetings in the middle of the day, where we're commuter community, people that want to participate can't because of the hours that these organizations have chosen to have these meetings. Very few councils are full-time councils like the city of Los Angeles. Everybody else is doing this part-time in conjunction with their full-time jobs. So it's very difficult for many people to hold these positions because they're in the middle of their workday, and many people don't work here in the city. Again, with the public, they can't attend these meetings either because the public's also working. So I find it unfortunate that these organizations do this in the middle of the day, early in the morning, at ten AM, where, you know, probably eighty percent of our residents cannot attend, and I think that's unfortunate.
Also, I think for the record, it should be known that our fifth district supervisor does have two appointments on that AVTA board. So if she wanted to do a town council member, she could do that. But she is, obviously has other people in mind today, that could change.
So relative to those meetings and stuff like that, that particular meeting is, is held at that time. I know that before I was even on there, that, that they had, I think even back in the, when the mayor was on that board, it was, it was quite, quite a project to find a suitable time for that, because there are so many agencies that attend that. And there are, in fact, I mean, if you go to one of those meetings, that, that room gets pretty full. There's, there's quite a bit of public there, and a lot of the, and a lot of the bus riders and the students from the college and stuff like that, I mean, that's how we make so many of the route changes and stuff that we do. So it's a time that, when, because we've got Metro, we get the Southern California Regional Rail Authority, we get MetroLink there, we've probably got a dozen agencies. It's not just a matter of telling our, our staff when they should go to this stuff. It was a matter of finding a time that ended up working for them, so. It works, and it, it, and it's been working, so, you know.
So maybe you might introduce a discussion on meeting times. That might satisfy what Councilman Bentencourt is referring to. A discussion by the AVTA board.
Well, I, I kind of brought it up, but everybody, everybody is very, they're, they're, everybody's good with the time that we're having it right now. I kind of did a bit of a straw poll if they'd wanna open up the discussion for another time. And again, it's, it's really, when you look at all the agencies that we depend on for funding sources and things like that over there, it's, again, it's not just a matter of AVTA staff and one of our city staff and some of the Lancaster staff showing up there. Again, there's sometimes many as a dozen different agencies that, that work this into their weekly schedule to be there, so. There just wasn't the, there just didn't seem to be the, the desire there to, to make that, you know, that additional, to go through a, a schedule changer yet, so.
Okay. Other discussion or a motion?
So on this item, I'd like to move to appoint Mr. Correa to the, as his second delegate, to AVTA.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? How about a voice vote, please?
Mayor Ledford?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bentencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
It's unanimous to appoint Mayor Pro Tim Correa.
Congratulations.
There's also, there's a, the alternate spot there, so it'd be. We need to fill that other alternate spot then. So, Mr. City Attorney, can we, being that we vacated that spot, be able to fill that spot at this time, or does it suggest an appointment at that spot at this point?
It's not on the agenda though, Steve.
Okay, so can we get it, can we get it on the agenda for next month then?
Yeah.
To fill it, to fill the alternate spot? All right, thank you.
All right. So we're good? Because I'm gonna go to the successor agency real quick, ladies and gentlemen. I want to recess the city council agenda at the public comment period, we're gonna come back to it momentarily. Let's take care of the successor agency, I'll call it to order, if I can have a roll call, please.
Chair Ledford?
Here.
Vice Chair Correa?
Here.
Director Hoffbauer?
Here.
Director Bentencourt?
Here.
Director Bishop?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, let's go to item three, consent calendar, public comments again. We look to our consent calendar, we got a report on investments, investment balances, and minutes. Anybody wish to make comment on the consent calendar? Merely come forward, give us your name for the record.
Who would approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Got a motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Approved, no objection. So now we are at item five, non-agenda is public comments on the successor agency, and we're at item ten, public comments, non-agenda items on the city council agenda. Who would like to come forward and address both entities? Just merely gotta give me your name for the record. And this could be about any subject you like, knowing that if it's not agenda is, we can't take action. Yes, man?
Kayla Worren. I actually was, and I apologize for that, it can be, so I don't really have much knowledge on how you guys' system works. But I'm not sure you guys are aware, you guys do have a very large deaf population here, and I just went to a petition signing for EDH, Antelope Valley Hospital. They are petitioning to remove the relay videos inside of the hospitals because the communication for interpreting when deaf people did go in there, the videos don't work. And it would save you guys a lot of funding. You guys wouldn't have to pay and purchase for the video relay services. Another thing is, it is more of a convenience to you guys as a deaf community, when they come in. It's a lot more easier for doctors in person, I've had my share of experiences. I was wondering if maybe you guys would consider starting a petition, if you guys have already purchased the video relay to maybe have them removed and bring back real life in-person interpreters.
Well, that's something that is a discussion that we could certainly discuss. I think right now we do have the relays. That's what's in place now. But again, we'd have to look to that, is, is it a better option? There's a lot of changing going on right now in the digital world, lots of ways to communicate with people that, non-traditional forms. I have an aunt and uncle that have been deaf, and I've been with them my whole life as well, you know this.
Yes, I do.
So, yeah, I talk to them about this. They have, they've gone through several ways of communication, and it lasts until the better option comes along, and they jump on the better option. Today, texting satisfies a lot of that, but not everything.
Yeah, and I've had my share of experiences at the Antelope Valley Hospital. Unfortunately, my dad's run into a lot of health issues, and still have a lot of the deaf community and not a lot of the modern health. The ones that you guys have here are a much older generation, so they tend to go to dialysis hospitals and communication lacking there for it, and they did start a petition for EDH, and I was just wondering if maybe I'd throw it out there, maybe a petition to bring back the real life interpreter.
I think, I think you're onto it, and I don't have a problem with giving that to staff to analyze, look at the options. That may or may not be the best form of technology. That's what I'm interested in knowing, is what's, what's next that may replace that, because that's been around for a while, correct?
Actually, the TTY is the virtual reality, not virtual reality, I'm sorry, forgive me. The video relay service is fairly new, as in, they're just now starting to use them. But now there's been a lot of faulty, sometimes interpreters will get up on the screen and leave, there's been volume errors.
Right.
Not clear communication, because the same thing that we have on phones, when you glitch, sometimes you can't hear. And these are, this is health that they're talking about, you know, so it's really important for them.
How about we do this, why don't we assign it to our staff to look at this and see if they're, you know, what is the option? It may be the petition, it may be, everything you say, I'm not trying to discount that, you know it, your firsthand knowledge. So I think that could give us a start to this, and we can research, you know, what are options, maybe.
We've, we've had an ongoing relationship over the years, and I haven't seen, heard from them in a while. Wrong term, but, but haven't seen them. But the Greater Los Angeles Area Council on Deafness.
We used to give, what, thirty-five?
Yeah, they used to get, they used to get a grant from the city through our CDV G funding and stuff like this. Have, have they been engaged in this process at all?
Not at all, and this is a fairly new process. In fact, the petition is just today, they had a meeting at Starbucks. It's the AV, AVDFA, the Antelope Valley Deaf Family.
With the, off the office, for one roof.
Yeah, and so they don't really communicate with each other on, on that basis. I don't know how the petition started per se, but I, I've never.
Maybe, maybe I ought to try to see if you can hook up with the LA office, because some of these organizations got ranch offices because of work. Because some of these organizations got branch offices because it worked out to have a branch office because they had somebody out here. And when that person wasn't here anymore, it kind of fell back down below. But I think maybe you might want to see if there can be some follow-up with those guys.
And don't forget to reach out to the Animal Valley College Center for Deaf Studies because they do the teaching out there for translators. And so they're a very big community and they work with a lot of our deaf citizens. So reach out to them also if you have a chance.
Yes, I know, they do the internships as well. Yeah, we're always contacting there through Facebook page where we all. But thank you, I just wanted to start off there.
Good point. Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
All right, who else would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Jason Zane. I just want to say, I'm actually a really jolly, happy person, but when it comes to AV leadership, it just brings me up. Because I've been waiting 20 years, 30 years, 18 months. When Laura, Juan, Austin, Steve, when you were elected, I thought we were going to go boom. I thought Animal Valley was really going to get everything going again. You know, five years, the recession's over. I just don't understand it, you know? Not one citizen can do it, except Pott can do it. You know, it's like we're on Pott. But what I want to talk to you about, too, is we have to start fighting for Palmdale. We've had two college bonds. We're now having a hospital bond. We're having state park bond measures. We're having an LA County Park Bond Measure. And what do we get? We get nothing because we don't participate in the process until it's too late and then they tell us, right? From the hospital bond, there's not $1 guaranteed to come to Palmdale. But yet, we will be paying half of those bonds for the next 40 years, okay? Does that sound fair? Does that sound fair to the east side resident? That there's no ER on the east side? If somebody has a heart attack or a stroke and they've got to wait 20 minutes to go to the ER room in Palmdale or AV Hospital, they're dead. Or they have a stroke and have to get fed through it too for the rest of their life. We want an ER in East Palmdale. We want a college site. We were promised a college site back when Pete Knight was mayor. He made it happen. Except we've got a lot of problems with the sites. And then the site, and I told you guys, I came to you, $5 million in public money. We bought 60 acres on the San Andreas earthquake fault, the biggest fault line in the western hemisphere. How smart are we? And you guys didn't do nothing. You guys owe me an apology, but you guys owe the community an apology. We want that college site now for the east side. It is time for east side of Palmdale, east side of Lancaster to get ERs. It is time for us to secure that college site for the future. The biggest poverty is on the east side. If you don't inspire these kids and give them a campus and give them everything the west side kids get, you're going to create more poverty. So what are you doing for the community? You have to inspire young people. You have to. Plus, it's good for the area. I want to build that Apollo Park with lakes and stuff on the east side. You just take an aqueduct line right down, right down the street and the recycle line goes right there. It's so easy. And guess what? Lackey could have got there some money for it in state park bond that just passed. And guess what? There's one on the November ballot too. And he didn't have nothing than that either. Do you guys understand? 18 months went by. I was there for you guys, but you guys didn't do nothing. It's crazy. I wanted to be flying to Las Vegas out of Palmdale Airport, you know? Why don't we have air service? I was in the city hall. They said, "We'll give you the airplanes, we'll subsidize everything, make it happen." My time's up. Fight for Palmdale. Fight for the east side. We only received 40% of all the park bond measure and only 90% of the trauma funds that every person in Palmdale is being taxed for, every property owner. What, you know why? Because we didn't do an audit of property taxes in the city of Palmdale to see how much money is going out and how much we should have been fighting for to bring back in.
Thank you.
That's why I wanted an audit. That's all. But I'm actually a really happy guy. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Yes, sir, this would be your opportunity.
Brighter evening, and what you just said made a lot of sense to me. So background on me, I'm 20, I just turned 21 yesterday for my birthday at old papers. And I started knocking on doors, just spending time, seeing if I can talk to anybody. But what happened was that nobody wants, nobody wanted a conversation. Every, for something, for some reason, in Palmdale is, there's no opportunities for anything. I'm trying to be involved with Parks and Recreation. I applied to Santa Clara and I have to be working out there. I'd like to be working out here and always centered by Dryson, but if I don't have my perm, I don't have the permits for the permission, well, I don't have the permits and it's going to be contract, which I don't want to do. I want to provide free exercise like what I do in summer. But that's besides the point. But what happened yesterday was Swan Grill's campaign manager, Hugo Estrada, he contacted me. It was pretty abnormal, meeting me outside, outside of this. So at 6:00 PM earlier, I went over to where you, at first we agreed to meeting and coffee bean, but he said, "Hey, can you meet up right on 3rd Street?" So I went over there and then he asked me, "Oh, so what do you want to do with the community?" And all I want for East Palmdale is to be, for everyone to have a chance to be informed and involved. If people don't want to stay uninformed and uninvolved, that's their choice. But at least give them an opportunity. And I want to be a community leader. I've suffered in silence for as long as I can remember. All I know is to mind my own business. And but when I had a friend try to take off my pants and that, and being denied from something that I've been working on my whole life, been at lecturing, but being denied from that, I had no purpose, I had no meaning, I lost all meaning, I gave up. And through wanting to be involved and informed, I found it to be fulfilling in 2016. That's when I became more involved on what's happening with my, who's representing me on the local level, state level, federal level. And earlier, when this all goes back to it was a meeting with your campaign, your campaign manager, I watched him, he's not a smart man. He's not a smart man. He told me that he wants Laura out of city council. And she wants Latinos to represent that. Well, sure, it's proportional that, hey, a lot of people are, it's, a lot of people are not being represented. But how about, let's say, everybody registers to vote? How about we get everybody knowing where their polling bases, what day is election? Because nobody knows the mayor, nobody knows the names of the people who are on the board. Like, people are just, if they had the chance, then maybe they would. But right now, I just don't see the chance. And that's something that I want to do. I want to be a community leader. I want to be able to talk to people and have a conversation, address their strengths and interests, along with their weaknesses and their, and just their issues, like something that's holding them back. But right now, the only person that's making any sense is the guy right here.
I just want you guys to represent everybody.
Very good. Thank you so much. All right, who else would like to speak? Last call? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for doing such hard work every day. Sorry for my appearance. I have just a couple of little things.
What's your name?
Oh, sorry, Cecilia Young. One thing I was curious about is the, what is being done with the homeless population in this area? I know the former chapter had closed in Lancaster then, I think they built something or doing something on the east side, the west side?
We just released our homeless study and plan to the community. You probably could find it online for this, for Palmdale. Lancaster has one, the county of Los Angeles has one. So right now, we're all developing our plans. Ours is developed. We know where we want to go. So eventually, we'll come together on issues outside of city jurisdiction where we collaborate. That is yet to happen. But you'll find a lot of information, I believe, online. I think they sent that information online?
Yes. Should be on the homepage, so they can.
On the homepage?
He can point out this, John over there?
On the homepage.
Sure, yeah, I'll shoot that.
Well, at my church, we do a lot with the homeless and people always forget there's homeless in Palmdale. Every time I go to somewhere like Ross, just might find out, there's always a town tabler, always there. And a lot in Lancaster as well. And so I was just kind of curious and I helped with the soup questions a lot. What I was curious is just, you know, like, when I worked in, when I was in San Diego, I volunteered over at San Francisco Paul and they had a full, it was a big homeless center, but it was for career development and counseling and all kinds of things.
Tall enough plan.
Oh, that's a, okay. I did hear something, but I wasn't sure if it was BTEP or.
And a faith-based community is a huge part of it.
Yeah, and is Palmdale part of the, with the county? I wasn't sure how, you know?
We have our Save South Animal Valley advocacy service now. That may be something you might want to look into because that's what we provide, a lot of homeless prevention is in Palmdale. And once you have the plan information, I think you'll have a better idea of what we're doing.
Right, okay, great. I know, because I, I know that our area has a lot larger homeless population in, and the money that comes to us from the county is very little in proportion.
But we've never had money in the past.
Yeah.
So Measure H passed, so there will be a little bit of money.
Okay, that's good.
But our job is to, we're going to eliminate homeless veterans. That's our first priority and then it's to eliminate homelessness in Palmdale.
Yeah.
So we have a goal.
That's terrific. Another small, I have a dog park, I love the one in Yellen, and we visited the other day. Is there any idea about maybe having a little area like an Anaverty Park? It's such a large grassy area that they possibly have some.
Actually, we have done a survey of the city and we've looked at locations for a second dog park. We're not ready to move forward on that yet. But I'm sure that when we're ready to move forward, we'll have the community be involved and we'll be able to take input and see what they're thinking as far as location.
There was, there was a spot identified beyond the softball fields over at Rick Kerr. There was some discussion about perhaps McAdam or another site there. So there's been a number of places been looked at, but a lot of it just comes down to finding the extra funding to end up creating, you know, so.
London, this is Anaverty, I thought that would be nice at Anaverty Park because it's such a large grassy area.
Sure.
It needs like a small section.
Yeah, we're a linear city, so we know east and west play a role.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, who else would like to speak? On any issue?
Nope. There's, quick, get that.
So I don't think he's going to speak. But he will give his information on homeless.
There you go, just sit down.
All right, with that, and let's, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the successor agency to September 4th, 2018, 7 o'clock. And let's go back to the city council agenda. What we have is informational reports. Who'd like to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
This is mine. We had the grand opening of Homes to Streets over here in the Trade and Commerce Center. I think they're already at 90% or more capacity. Hotels out here do really, really well, really can't get enough of it. But we're glad they're here and they're going to, they're going to do really well up here in the city. So that was a great event, probably going to be invented. Palmdale Water Recycle Authority, we're doing what we can to get the gears moving on that. Getting some purple pipe in the ground. We want to get recycled water out of these parks and some of these other facilities to make better use of our water in sanitation district. It's been enough about that. We're doing everything we can to use these resources wisely. And hope to have more information on that soon. Maybe Q and B, we revised our B schedule. We talked about some ozone levels of dog air quality that we're having. The area, different air quality during the summer. As you notice, it's not so great because of all fires and we have a lot of that stuff blowing in. Even today, the air quality in Dallas is much lower. I'm sure a lot of people noticed that because we're getting a lot of smoke coming in from down the well. I attended the Palmdale Water District 100th anniversary, which is fantastic. They put on a great show and we had really, really good turnout from the community. And it's nice to see something, something working so well in the community, giving back and an agency that's really taking care of our own. I attended the NCTC meeting where we appointed a new executive director. I made it vocal that we need the 14 freeway for extra commuters. We have a very heavy commuter population, so one of my goals of being on the NCTC, that newly formed board, is to get as much money as we can to open up that 14 freeway. It goes down to two lanes.
Isn't there a study taking place right now?
There is.
That's going to determine what those, what picks will be.
So that's, that's a big plus.
Anything that drags down and figure where the picks would be.
Well, we need it to justify.
Where it sucks.
Raising money.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's, you know, more involved and just, you know, throw money at it. I lunch with the city manager and we went over some various issues and some topics and stuff I'd like to see in the future and other things. I attended the Larry Jambolay freeway, Larry Jambolay signed dedication, Palmdale Boulevard. I was very well attended and it's really nice to see a man that's dedicated so many years of his life to the city and was so dedicated to taking care of the city, first mayor of Palmdale. So it's nice that when people drive down the boulevard, they're going to see his name and he's going to be remembered for all the good stuff he did for our community. Attended an Anaverty Neighborhood Picnic. That was fun. We have a lot of good stuff going up in our Anaverty community. And more stuff, I'm always out there in the community, meeting with residents and doing everything I can to hear people out, from eating the trash to any other ideas that residents may have of all years. So that was it for my month. You want to ask?
As we've gone online, I attended that AQMD meetings with Mr. Bishop, like he said, fee schedules. And so it's important is that the fee schedules are still some of the lowest around by far. And a lot of the small businesses, some of programs within the AQMD. If you have a business and you have, especially with some diesel equipment, the AQMD's got money, it's a money bomb coming out of it, I think. So if you've got a business, you need to replace some equipment. We dispersed almost $300,000 in grant funding, covering over 61% of the funding for greater equipment and stuff that's going to eliminate over 7.1 tons of pollution a year in a community. So it's, it's good stuff. We've done these things with the school buses and I'll talk to them right down there.
Basically, our registration money coming back.
Yep, we're bringing that money back to the community here. So we're, we're trying to get the word out to more and more businesses out here. That's been my goal, is to make sure that more of our Palmdale businesses are aware of this. ABTA, we had our board meeting, very exciting with the, with our reps at the county. And our county reps over there are pretty confident in what's going on, watching the services and stuff. And one, one rep is also over at the college. And last year, we had had some complaints about the timing of the buses, how long it takes to get from the east side campus facility over to the, over to the main campus. And the kids were saying, you know, it can take two hours in fact to get over there. We worked on that thing and I actually rode that line and it took me three hours because I missed my bus. So we came back, we looked at it, we did the study. And we've got the campus expresses starting with this fall session. And it'll be an express bus that goes from the east side campus facility, it'll stop at the Palmdale Transit Center and go to Lancaster facility, it's a one-hour turnaround and that. So it's cut it down to less than a quarter of work if you're, if you're a lousy bus rider. A lot, cut a lot more, so. But so that's working. The other one that I'm very excited about is the stop that we're adding, two stops a day going down, two coming back to the West LADA. We've got a lot of guys saying that they have a problem getting to the West LADA facility. And the, so home of the VA has kind of been okay, they've been able to handle it because We've got a lot of guys saying that they have a problem getting to the West LADA facility. And the, so Palm DVA has kinda been okay, they've been able to handle it, because it's like one transfer, and you take the train down and grab a bus, and you're there. But it's like an all-day excursion, it's just hours and hours and hours to get to the West LADA. So for those of you that ride that 786 bus down to Century City and UCLA, you're gonna have some new riders on there, and they're gonna have a subsidized Veterans Pass on that thing as well. We worked on the disadvantaged business enterprise, some charging stations, and we approved the community workforce agreement. So that was a busy month over at ABTA. Same report with Mr. Bishop over at the NCTC meetings. There's also, there's a North County Cities meeting I attended with Mr. Ledford. Couple of highlights on that, most of it is online. You can download the maps from Caltrans and stuff like this, and some of the projects they're working on, on the 138 congestion relief and things like this, some of the MetroLink work that's going on to release some of the congestion as you're going down through the valley, because of single tracking to fix that. Something that came out that was really important was from a bobcat. They've had a couple back east with rabid ones. Out here, you got your cat, or your poodle, or your lasso obstacle, it's more likely to be attacked by an owl, a red-tailed hawk, or a coyote, so than you do with bobcat. They're looking for dinner, they're looking for water, they're looking for food. Don't facilitate it, and if you are feeding it, you can actually cite it. We just had a meeting this morning with the Regional Enforcement Office for Wildlife, and they're gonna cite you if you have evidence that you're going out there deliberately feeding that bobcat, because you're altering its habits, and you're causing it to not be afraid of coming around people. It's not a good, it's not a good combination. Latino Business Summit was extremely well-attended, a lot of great information there. City periodically does programs, we have a Business Appreciation Breakfast coming up. If you've got a business, you need information, come to one of these, and get your business out there, find out where there's money. The Jimboley Sign Event, again, that was very well-attended, National Night Out. I attended, along with Mr. Ledford, the Veterans Court Graduation. I got there when court opened that morning, and listened to some of these guys' stories, watched how the process was working and things like that, and that Veterans Court has turned a lot of these guys around. It could've been in a lot bigger trouble and created more of a nuisance for the community, themselves, for the family, and for the city. And here's a way to get these guys back on course, help them get their records straightened out. We kinda owe it to these guys, that, you know, yeah, they screwed up, but let's give them a chance to make it right, because they've done stuff right for us before. I also went up today, a Federcanion Graduation Program for the Building Trades Training that they're doing up there. These guys, when they're getting out now, a lot of these guys are pretty close to getting out, they've been up there, they've been up in the conservation camp. It's up Big Rock Creek, if you haven't been up there, and you go up there, and there's a big sign that tells you to stop. So it's on the other side of that big stop sign. But these guys are committed to coming back out and being protective members of the community, and it was really good, every one of them volunteered to be into that program. They were all very appreciative of being there, and the programs that we're doing there over at ABC are programs that when we go out to other programs around the region, we go to seminars, we go to conferences, and we talk about workforce development, it keeps coming back. ABC keeps coming out on the top of that list, other people are looking at, how are you guys able to put this type of stuff together? It's because the community and the colleges and all the other organizations are working together to make it happen. So it's been very successful. Air Park has Twilight Tours. Went out with other city representatives, and we participated in the City Hack event, Palm Dale Water District 100 Year Anniversary. I attended over at the Recycled Water Authority, and we're looking to get an update on the Recycled Water Purple Pipe, we'll go through about where we're at with some of that stuff. I sat in.
What's that?
Yeah, so it's all it takes is money, exactly. We're looking for more grants and stuff, our staff is very, very in-depth looking at that stuff. Contract Cities Liability Trust Fund Board Meeting, again, looking at liability issues, looking at doing the hard work that it takes to try to keep the rates down, keep our insurance rates down, because the insurance is costing more than some deputies are costing at this point. So it's, that's, that is toughest board, to be honest, because I really wish I could tell you what we're hearing at those meetings, but because it's all litigation-related, and a lot of it is complete and utter BS. Some of it is quite legitimate, and there's issues we gotta work out. So, there you go. Oh, Lions Club, went to one of their dinners, and then a whole bunch of other little, other community events that are out there, but, go ahead.
Thanks. I'll go next. I attended some of the events already mentioned. The theater at the Palm Dale Amphitheater, the Leo Tisser, what he sent you, I think it was a great turnout, also with the other events at the, at the park. Music at the park, I attended the one at Dominic Mazzari, the one before this last Thursday. Also attended the Jimboley Dedication on the Boulevard, the National Night Out, attended that also. The other concert with Brent Michaels, again, at the amphitheater. The 100th Anniversary Grand Celebration with the Palm Dale Water District. Again, some of the same, same events already mentioned. The Milan Concert, again, at the amphitheater. And I had a couple of meetings with the Antler Valley Hospital. They reached out to me, and checked with the rest of the council, but they wanted to talk to me about the bomb that is coming up, I had a meeting with them. I did receive a couple of phone calls from residents on the east side, letting me know about some desert dumping and stuff to kill that. And speaking of that, now that we have a contract with Waste Management, I believe we're gonna be getting an equipment, a truck that will pick up large bulk items.
The truck.
I think that's coming up soon. I think that this will be a good opportunity to put a desert dump event, and maybe that's something I can start looking at, since there's still a lot of dumping happening along Avenue PA between Fortyth and Fiftyth. That's something that I discussed with the city manager. That's the city boundary between the county and the city. On the south side, that's the city side, and there's quite a bit of trash over there that we need to take a look at.
Call it in, when you see this stuff, call it in, let us know.
Yeah, yeah, again, I got those folks with residents, and I just passed that on to staff, and they were able to take care of that.
Yeah, the homeless.
It's a never-ending battle of the dumping, and we'll clean it up one day, and they'll dump it the next day. And it doesn't even have to be in a rural area. Driving home yesterday, there's a little field by my house, and somebody said they dumped their furniture and mattresses there, so it's ongoing issue.
I just find it amazing, because it's trash service required by everybody, and I don't, not sure with the county, I think it is with the county, it's required as well, and yet people have a reason to dump. When we have large item pickups, we got ways to get rid of mattresses, we got programs for all of this, and it's just hard getting people connected and...
I think sometimes it's these bargain basement cleanup crews that people get.
Yes, these contractors.
These cheap contractors that go out and they'll do apartment or move out for eviction cleanup.
Yeah.
And then that's why they're so cheap, because they're not taking it to the dump, they're taking it and dumping it in the desert.
It's the first or second most common complaint I get from residents. You see them graffiti, but more likely it's the trash.
But I think, again, the Waste Management Contract's gonna get us not only equipment, but I think what we're hoping with, we can work with Waste Management in the county, maybe we can develop a much greater awareness and participation. I think that's, yeah, there's a lot of trash out there, no doubt.
Can I comment?
Sorry.
Catch us afterwards, while we're walking. Come see me afterwards.
Just have to make the notice.
Yeah.
All right.
That's it? That was part of my report.
Okay.
I won't repeat everything that they've said. I also attended the Palm Two Suites, absolutely beautiful rooms in that place, I could live there easily. Did the music in the park, had some relatives in from out of town, and took them over to the air park to see that. I attended the Victory Outreach Backpack Giveaway for all the kids out there. We're moving forward with our marijuana committees, Pathbauer and myself and staff are working on getting that scheduled relatively soon. It's coming right up. Actually, it's tomorrow. I actually met with one of our directors and drove through my district with him this time, and pointed out some of our problem areas with cars on blocks, dumping, graffiti, so that they can see firsthand what our citizens are seeing. We've had a lot of complaints in our neighborhood, so I just kind of grabbed the director and kidnapped him and put him in my truck and drove him to all these places, so he's intimately aware of the issues. I've met with many citizens, and they do like to be heard, and once you get them in your office, they'll be there for two or three hours at a conversation, so prepare yourselves for that, if you're gonna have them come to your office. But they have some very valid comments to make. I attended the 100th Anniversary of the water park, and that was very, very well done.
Water District.
I'm sorry, Water District, thank you. My bad. We had, I attended my last TPAA board meeting, which had to be rescheduled for the 31st, because our regular meeting, we had 12 people on that board, and we were not able to get a quorum. And this is the issue that we've been having on that board, is that we just can't get people to make those meetings. So we had to reschedule it for the 31st, and what we discussed was the new elementary school that will be built in conjunction with our school that we have now. The enrollment numbers for our school are maintaining really high numbers, our attendance is exceptional at that school. We have a waiting list of almost 800 students wanting to come into that school, and now there's, there's more because of the fear of another charter school maybe not being renewed. All of those parents are coming to us, wanting to get into our school, but our budget has already been set, and we don't have the room and the teachers set up to take that kind of a level of how the students coming in. Other things, had a meeting with the city manager.
Very good. You know, I'd like to, you know, talk, when we meet with residents, or we, in the street or after this meeting, and I, there's gonna be, there's always that exchange going on, is I've just encouraged the council, is we wanna get people to access the system. Meaning, this is where you can make a complaint, this is where you can report that car on blocks, this is where you can, all those complaints, it creates a tracking of those events, and so for us, it makes it easier to say to our staff if we follow up on these complaints. So, I mean, it's okay to be that conduit. We are, anyway, as elected officials, but the goal really is to get people to access a system that we're in place.
The problem that I have, a lot of people in my district have no email, have no computers, don't, some of them don't even have cell phones, because they're very old and they're, they're not technology-friendly. So, I mean, you guys know who I'm talking about, I have a whole group of people that come in, and they're, they do not use technology at all.
Right.
So the only option that they have is to come to me, and that's what I, that's why I'm here.
Yeah.
That's what I'm here for.
Agreed.
My door is always open.
Agreed. All I'm just saying is, it's always preferred, we can get people to access the system.
I get that.
Anyway, that's just kind of my two cents on how we follow up on complaints, and you wanna have a robust discussion about that, so I get all that. All right, how about something very positive?
Yes, let's have something positive.
I would like to commend our record culture, Carrie, because we would blame you. But we're not blaming you tonight, we're congratulating you, because your entire department has had an outstanding summary. All the events that you guys do and are doing, you stepped it up a notch, we've asked you to do that, you did this year, here's more events, there's more opportunities for involvement. Our concert series has been phenomenal.
And Lifeguard's won that award again.
Lifeguard's got the World Award again.
World Class Award, great job.
All the, you know, you're in full effect, and it's really good to see. I know our movie night, I haven't made it to a movie night yet, but I gotta tell you, I believe it's probably well-attended.
One more's on for Friday.
One more, Coco this Friday, at the amphitheater. If you haven't been there, take a picnic blanket and enjoy, because you really have a very, very good night. So Record Culture, you are in full effect, and I just wanna kind of bring that up, to say, good job, you're not done, you're almost done, this is our final weekend, and we're gonna have Metalachi will be at the concert for Saturday night, so there's a great opportunity to enjoy. I think certainly the best place for entertainment in the Antler Valley is that amphitheater. You can't, you can't beat it. So, anyway, I just wanna give you a little shout-out for that. Talk about where I've been and what I've done is, July, we did our Chamber Walk, went to the Panera Bread Center, we went door-to-door, eat with those managers primarily of those businesses, but we got a pretty good pulse of what's going on, whether it be panhandlers or other things, loitering, you know, vandalism, these are all things that we follow up with and develop strategies to minimize. So, anyway, that's been very, very effective, we do it monthly, and we move around the city, so. Other event I went to is a grand opening for Home Suites, we've talked about that, beautiful, and another hotel. But hang on, ladies and gentlemen, we have more coming, more hotels have an interest in this market, so prepare for more. And again, the music in the park, Hanzavon and Dominic Mazzari, those have been well-attended this year, and again, I gotta hand it back to Record Culture, because they've got a lot of people showing up to just concerts, a food truck, games for the kids, and those square dancers, those line dancers show up every time.
Even with the heat, they're out there dancing.
They do. So anyway, good job on that one, because I think spreading it out, Marie Kerr and, or not Marie Kerr, but Dominic Mazzari brings another element. You know, those people indicated they wanted to reclaim their park, this was three years ago. We've had our third National Night Out there, well-attended, probably the best attendance we've ever seen, and what I was impressed with was the tot lot area, all of the young families with very young tot-age kids, far more than I expected, and I believe they're there every night, whether we have National Night Out or not, and so that is part of reclaiming their park.
You know a term I heard from the folks over there? Mayberry. They said that park is turned into Mayberry with all the attention over there. I couldn't even believe it, I said, "Seriously?" And they said, "No." And one of our security staff was standing there, and he says, "No, this is one of the most boring assignments now, is Mazzari Park."
So the element that was plaguing that is now turning, because good people show up and reclaim what is ours, and that, these parks, all of our parks are ours, and the more we show up, certainly the more we're gonna see a positive effect. All right, next one is, I met with, I do the same thing, summer concerts, that was great. Again, I met with the CEO of Antler Valley Hospital, and yes, they are planning a bond, and they're, they're looking to gauge interest throughout the Antler Valley. Certainly, they have plans to move forward, and I, again, I support that, but what I don't support is, I'm not gonna get into competition with these hospitals over either Medical Main Street or our Lifestyle Center, because I think that's part of the game here, is how do you spark that development, which is different than a hospital rehab or enhancing directly with Palmdale Regional. So this is something we need to pay attention to, as we get asked to participate, is how much are we ceding potentially a competitor as far as medical services? And I don't wanna raise a red flag here, I just want us to pay attention, because that's certainly important. Also, I had a, preparing for our State of the City, we'll be doing that this month, starting, Chamber Luncheon, of course, I go to the Chamber, Palm Dale, the African-American and the Hispanic Chamber, went to Hispanic Chamber Luncheon today, and I think it's important that you stay connected to the business community, so that's one way of doing it. Went to a grand opening of Bianco's Juice and Rios on the east side of Palm Dale, they had their one-year anniversary, again, another concert in the park, was awesome. Went to a Sala, had a citizen graduation, so I was able to show up, present certificates to those who have graduated the citizenship program. We have several entities in the valley that are doing these citizenship classes, and I feel it's something we need to do to support, protect, and to celebrate, so that's happening, good stuff. Brent Michaels, that was all good, and I went to a conference in San Diego, AP3, Public Private Partnership for Air Force. Lots of interest in Palm Dale, lots of interest in our market, and what we found is, we're just basically, as we talk this up, we're finding people that may have an interest in either participating, or certainly get hired to do certain work that we need done, as we continue to work out of Plan 42 with our defense contractors in the Air Force. We're developing our airport, not only today, but in the future. Ladies and gentlemen, we're getting more attention today than we've ever had, so it's something we just wanna pay attention to, and I gotta congratulate our city manager, Jim Burti, on heading up that effort, and that relationship seems to be cooking quite nicely. Again, went to that, I went to, wasn't able to make the Latino Business Summit, darn it, but I was out of town. Music in the park again, just kind of walking through this stuff, you guys. NCTC meeting, again, Councilman Hopfire talked about this one, we went down to City of Glendale, and we had a, it's a Northern Corridor Cities Meeting, and I gotta tell you, and this is really through the NCTC, we have teed up a billion dollars for the Antler Valley, ladies and gentlemen, a billion with a B, of projects that are slated to come, and all it takes is our continued follow-up and continued supporting of a regional agenda as well as a city agenda. And these are monies coming from Measure R, Measure M, this is, speaks to the 500 million for MetroLink is part of that, but we have a billion dollars teed up right now, and so that's something for us to look forward to, and that's why I'm very concerned about our transportation agenda, maintaining the focus, maintaining the goal of getting investment dollars back in the Antler Valley, and that's how you play the game. So, again, to everybody, congratulations on that one. Did a debriefing with the Highlands Church over our Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, we're already planning for next year, so that's something to look forward to. Met with the new AB Press Editor, seems like a nice lady, and of course, she's got a lot on her hands with the newspaper, but the fact of the matter is, we're getting to know the new people as they come onboard, and so that, anyway, that went very well. Again, National Night Out, well-attended, congratulations to everybody, stellar job, and I believe that... Congratulations to everybody, stellar job, and I believe that park is well on its way to being reclaimed. Jolier Chamboli, dedication to the street, that's awesome. We met over somebody using the amphitheater. Anyway, Veterans Court, like Mr. Hopfire talked about, we showed up at AD Courthouse for that, and it's good to celebrate again, people making good steps in their life. Other than that, I think that is probably it. Oh. Attended this last weekend, completely kind of caught off guard, but we had an opportunity to attend a Paul George fundraiser at Castake Lake. Now, Paul George is an NBA player. He plays now for the Oklahoma Thunder, and this is the second year he's had this event. First year, we got invited, was this year, and we were able to show up, and he dedicated a $25,000 contribution to our city, to parks, primarily the basketball courts, they're going to rehab those. But more importantly, he wants to partner with some of these grant monies that are available at the state and the county level to match for the city of Palmdale. So, that relationship is just starting to produce real benefit. And here's a gentleman that is, again, one of the best players in the world, from our home community. And what I love about it, the first time I met him, I asked him, "Please mention the city you come from." And guess what? Paul George does that at every opportunity. It's great to hear it on NBA telecast, Palmdale, Paul George in Palmdale. And so, and I'm not here to take credit for that, but I think he is proud of the city he comes from, and he's showing it by contributing real dollars in a way that helps kids just like him. Because when he grew up, they aspired to be basketball players, they aspired to hit the big time, they aspired to be as good as some of the best in the world, and certainly Paul George did that. Now, quite sudden, out of left field, haven't been invited before, so I just go to everybody that might feel like, "Why didn't, weren't you included?" But really, it's because he didn't want a lot of people. Actually, we had a team out of our Rec and Culture show up that he brought, he didn't even allow the parents to show up. So, he had the coach of the team there and the support for that. But the fact is, this guy's got a good heart, and I think it's something we need to celebrate. And we're going to do more. We're going to try to get into a council meeting. We're going to try to do some other stuff to recognize, you have made a significant effect in your community. Thank you, Paul George. We need to do that on a regular basis. So, that is it for me. I talked about today's Hispanic Luncheon, Chamber Luncheon. All right, so, that's that. I think our city manager has a report. He's got a list of things he wants to give us feedback on.
If it's okay, can I go after council request for new agenda items, because if I report, it might generate new, more new agenda items for me.
Yeah, don't be scared. Come on, man.
Thank you, may I have another?
Yeah.
All right, let's talk about items for new agenda items. Anybody care to step up with something?
I'd like, I don't know if our Sheriff's Department's still here, but can we take a look, please? And if this came to my attention, a meeting with some folks over, and you know, the medical offices that are north of the hospital over there, they've been having a problem with their vehicles either being vandalized or broken into, and they're spending more money to put their vehicles over in the RV storage facility because it's locked up. People shouldn't have to be looking to do that, and I don't know that they should have to be paying for extra security over there. But can maybe we bring it to the attention of the Sheriff's Station and maybe have them do some extra?
Actually, I think you bring up a good point, but we might want to think about sending our public safety department over there and help them establish a business watch.
Needs to be looked at, because if you take a look at that storage center that's right off the freeway, that's where all their vans are being parked at night now. So, and that ultimately ends up translating to cost to all the patients and customers. So, another one, make sure that we get the AVTA alternate on there. And then, also, I, we spend a lot of time on the dry town, and I know we're not having any, you know, big issues out there. I don't want to see us have one. Want to make sure that, can we talk to the Sheriff's Department to make sure, I'm getting the feedback that maybe the deputies that, when they work the overtime out there, it doesn't get credited towards their overtime like patrol does? I'm not sure if I got that right or not, but I know you talk to the captain all the time, because we don't always have a deputy there, and we don't always have security there. You and I talked about this, but it's just an observation, that place is such a gem. Parks and Recs worked so hard at it over there, and if we have a problem, like several years ago, we had a problem and kind of took a little heat over it, and I just want to make sure that we, you know, keep the standard up over there, you know? So, making sure, if you got a, look, if we got to get another security guy or something like that, let's make sure we get security, you know? But some of the perceptions are not reality. We found that out, we got the report run there, but I think just the presence prevents it.
Always good.
Yeah. And one other thing here, so Santa Clarita just did a deal, and I followed up on it, and everybody's seeing online all these Ring camera photos, here's the crook, here's the guy that shut my door, here was the guy that was walking off with the package. And so, I did a little homework, I bounced it over to staff and said, "What have you guys heard on this?" Santa Clarita's program was a huge success. LAPD did a program in a neighborhood where they're having a problem with burglaries. They covered 41% of the homes in that neighborhood, and they experienced a 55% reduction in burglaries in that neighborhood. The, you talk to the detectives, and they love those things. So, Ring has a program that the city can partner with them on, and that they provide matching funds, the city provides a portion of it, and we're able to get these, Santa Clarita and down in this LA were the two closest ones, but they're being done, just do a Google search, you find these things all over, they're doing it in communities all over the United States. So, the city has the opportunity to participate in this, and they have it at various thresholds. The one that I think would end up working here would be if we were to do a $50,000 matching program with Ring, that would provide up to 500 cameras, which could be made available to residents in our community. It could be broken up into like 125 cameras for each district, you know, for maybe the first 30 days or something like that, to make sure that, because we want to make sure these things get spread out all over the community.
Well, I think that you, okay, you know that I do crime analysis. We need to have the right tools at the right place with the right people, and the people that need them most, I'm telling you right now, are the east side.
Right.
I also want to say that it's not just the Ring program, since we're trying to broaden it up, that we need to engage in. I've always thought that our city should have some type of building requirements, that every time a new house is built, you put in motion sensor lighting, it should be mandatory. There's a lot of things that we can do to help make our citizens not victims, and I think as we're having new builders come in, maybe this is for the next agenda item, I know it's, we're not supposed to talk about it now, but he brought it up, there's a lot of things that we can do.
That's all part of the subject.
As far as subject, and we as a city can mandate that in the new builders that come into our communities. So, maybe we can have a workshop on that one day.
Well, we can talk about, as we do our general plan, we're going to be looking at elements that we want to include.
Absolutely, but it doesn't do any good to put out, you know, to start passing out North City communities here, but, you know, over in Goody Hills, they probably don't need to have a donated Ring system.
What's that, Bertie?
Actually, I have a Ring at home, and there's a website that you can use, it shows your old neighborhood.
Right.
They are very affectionate, but they're not even manufactured.
But before you start handing them out, that analysis is done, or what the need is.
So, that's exactly why I said we need to break these up by district, make sure that they become available, so you spread, because again, you concentrate them all in one neighborhood, you just, it's kind of like you put all the resources at one park, it pushes the problem to another park. So, that's why I think we need to spread these out. Also, to your point, we checked with a couple of the other security companies, we checked with some of the other camera companies, nobody else has got a program that's similar to this.
Not matching.
Yeah, they don't have a matching program. You want to buy our cameras, we'll be happy to sell them to you, but they don't have these other programs. We checked with ADT, we checked with Vivint, we checked with several of these other ones, and they don't, their thing is, "Hey, sure, you want to subscribe, subscribe, whatever you want to do," you know? So, I'd like to see if we can get something back on our next agenda to approve a resolution and let the city manager move forward.
Well, I agree, but why don't we do an analysis and then see if it's worthy of putting it up on the agenda?
But we've kind of done the homework here, and the, I've kind of got to break.
Part of it, part of us, the organization needs to.
Well, if you, give me a second here, I can finish telling you that when I brought it up, city manager brought his, had his staff prepare the information for us, so.
I haven't seen anything yet.
Well, it's because I just got it, and it's not on the agenda, because that's why I want to get it on the agenda, so we can potentially take action on it. So, this, again, this is something that has just come up, and, you know, again, with the stats being so strong on this thing, with the reductions and this stuff, I think it's something that we really need to consider looking at, and we have the ability to spread it out, you know, all across the city, so.
All right. Any other items?
So, looking for some consensus to bring a staff report back on that with the analysis. We've looked at Santa Clarita's staff report, and we've talked to several vendors already. Some of them, all of a sudden, want to adopt that business model, so they may be coming to the market soon, because they found out about this matching grant from Ring. And so, if we were, just throwing 50,000 out there, they would match it with another 50,000, and then additional $30 coupon to each person for additional Ring equipment.
Well, you need, it's yearly $30 a year to subscribe to have a video.
If you want the, if you want the, if you want the archive deal on it, you don't have to have the archive, because when it rings, you'll still get the video up on it too. So, it's your choice as far as how far you want to take it to.
Anything we can do to increase the safety and?
Yeah, I don't think that's a bad thing. If you're ready is the point.
Yeah, we've done some preliminary analysis, but we can bring back an analysis and some options for the council. And so, we can decide whether to continue to study it or figure out a way to fund it.
And where would the funding come from?
Good old general fund, we got to figure out.
Well, we could all join that game.
Yeah, and so, we've got to figure out where we can pull that money from.
Well, a quarter million upgrades in the chamber, it shares help in, help our community.
Well, there's always rationale to spend money. I agree.
I'd say there's just a, there's just a real, there's been a real uptick in residential burglaries and stuff like that.
Well, I think that's where the analysis comes in, either support or dispel that. I don't want to create hysteria, I just want to look at it, maybe something that could be effective and help in our community, because we actually are the safest we've ever been. So, let's maintain that.
And we can always be safer.
I have a request that's not going to cost any money.
All right.
That's always good.
You mentioned that you attended a Sava graduation for their citizenship classes.
In our community, oh.
Right. I was contacted by them about six, seven months ago, and I had a meeting with the city manager. They approached me, and I believe that they approached somebody else.
Yeah, I talked to them too.
So, the bottom line, they wanted us to see how the council would feel about presenting a resolution in support of the TPS, that is, the Temporary Protection Status, a program that was staffed through the current administration, something similar to what we had in Daca in November. They asked me to see if that's something that the council would entertain. Again, it's just symbolic, you know, that's a federal issue, but if we would agree to have a resolution presented in support, they were working on the same as draft from what other cities have adopted, and they haven't sent it to me yet, they're working on it. So, as soon as I get it, I'll send it to the city manager, and then the city manager will distribute it to the rest of the council. So, that's something that you guys would be willing to do and put it on the agenda for September.
I'd like to see it.
Once we get it, I'll forward it to the city manager, and then you guys can look at it.
We can put it to the boxes and then look at bringing it back in September.
All right. Anybody else? All right, Mr. Burti.
So, I wanted to do a city manager update to kind of get some information out there. I've got a few items, so bear with me. In regard to the airport, we've signed the lease agreement with the Air Force to retain, actually regain, control of our air terminal, and so, that's done.
Took us 30 years.
Sure did.
Took a while. And then, Thursday, I'm meeting with the Air Force and the defense contractors, including the Air Force staff from Wright Patterson, they're flying out from Ohio, to go over Plant 42's needs on both sides of defense. This relates to our defense access to roads, where we're looking at applying for probably up to $100 million in federal funding to improve all of the roads around Plant 42, as well as work with the Air Force on developing a memorandum of understanding for future airport development expansion, particularly in regard to cargo, keeping cargo and passengers separate. And then finally, we finalized a consultant agreement for airport development with a consultant who is an airport master planner, as well as connected with all the different commercial airlines, and he's already come out and toured the site with us, looking at all around Plant 42 and what our opportunities are there. And so, that's looking really good, and we had that in time for the airport summit. So, when we went there, we had our maps, we had our plans really well laid out, and we were kind of rock stars at that summit as far as.
Got a lot of attention.
What's happening in the airport world. And this was a, really an international summit. In regard to technology, our TrackIt program, which is online services for both code enforcement and all of our permit processes, will go live October 17. Staff's been working hard on that. It's a huge software and hardware implementation. We already have project docs where plans can be submitted online and back and forth between developers, architects, and the city. TrackIt will allow both staff to track all the different permits that are being processed, as well as the developers and people looking for inspections and so forth, to be able to go online and look at their status. Our materials asset management software for Public Works, we've selected a system vendor, Lucity, and we're going to start working with them, bringing that forward to council, refreshing that, the final pieces of the agreement out on that, we'll be bringing that to council, and that's going to automate our asset management. Our website contract with Civic Plus has been awarded, and the first project coordination meeting has been held, and we're looking at going live with that project in 2019. You can say, "Well, why would it take you six months to develop a website?" It's all the content management behind the website. I did two websites for Simi Valley, it took about the same amount of time, because we went from 250 pages of content that were hard to find to 10,000 pages of content that you were, three clicks and you were there.
And you got ADA requirements on top of this.
Correct. And so, we're looking at all that, and so, we're moving forward with the website. Our computer refresh was kicked off with the administration building first. I think council has all-new computers, no more blue screen for Laura.
Yeah, mine crashed, so I think I got the first one, so.
I think so. So, that went forward. The council chamber upgrades are progressing, we're looking at completion in October, so we'll be out of Chamboli and back into, we probably have one more meeting before we can get back into the regular council chambers. On emergency operations, every staff person in the city has now been trained, received FEMA training to get certification in at least two of the FEMA requirements in regard to emergency operations center.
And we got that email on the basic council training classes that we're supposed to be taking?
I think we're working on getting that out.
And I know there's a list.
There's a list that for each different group, there's a different set of classes. The department heads and myself, we had to take about six, six classes, it was about 12 hours of FEMA training, which for me was Saturday and Sunday.
Yep.
That's how it works. And then, the, we also held staff training, mandatory training citywide for all staff in regard to emergency operations and our emergency operations center, and we're getting prepared for a functional exercise, where we'll actually take the seats in the emergency operations center, and also have staff go out on mock, you know, shutdown building, post-whatever-trauma we're going to come up with, and we'll throw some curveballs and so forth and get them to start understanding just how critical emergency operations centers can be. And that's in preparation for the statewide Great Shakeout at 10:18 a.m. on October 18th. So, we'll be having an event at that time, not to sit my hand as to when it's going to happen.
Be ready.
You will be including council in this, in these activities?
Yes.
I know that we go through these drills with the Sheriff's Department, so I want to make sure that all of us will be included with the process.
I think I've been through 32 of those.
You know what? Practice, practice, practice.
Yeah, that's what it takes. Yeah, that's what it takes. And then the emergency operations center itself is getting technology upgrades as part, as part of the city council chamber upgrades. And then finally, we're updating the emergency operations plan to get that up to date. And also our EOC staffing responsibilities list because there's been a lot of turnover just in the last six months even in regard to who should staff what at the EOC, particularly after all the training. In regard to capital projects, we have $26 million in capital projects currently under bid, contract, or construction. In planning, the RFP responses are due back for the Avenue West Corridor Study on August 13. And then projects in the pipeline on the commercial side, we have a hotel at 08 and 10th Street that's going through the planning process right now. And we have 10 industrial buildings, the Fairway Business Park, on redevelopment properties that the city sold that are in the pipeline or starting construction, totaling 370,000 square feet of new industrial manufacturing.
Good job.
So that's, that's a huge change for, there is no inventory right now of commercial manufacturing space in the city. Also, two medical buildings in the process at M4 and 10th, and a storage facility at R8 and Sierra Highway. And then, as I said earlier, the cannabis committee meets tomorrow. Bring you chips.
I have a question about your hotels.
Yes.
I know that there's no one joining in. Is there, are you reaching out to these hotels? We don't have a single hotel on the east side. You realize that. And I know that it's not, the freeway's not there, but you know, a lot of people travel at 138. And I'm just wondering if we could maybe reach out to some chain and say, a lot of land, a lot of space, and one day it's going to be, you know, built up even more than it is, maybe?
Each one of these, you made a good point.
Yeah.
But each one of these developers that build up hotels are kind of familiar with what's going on.
Yeah.
I think it's like, it's like some of this regional retail. It's the freeway. If the freeway was on 47th Street East, you'd have hotels.
Sure, I understand that. But we do, we do have 138. And you know, we have, we have the Edwards guys going, going out the back roads too, and a lot of times, and one out 50th Street. So I don't think it's, it's inconceivable to have a top notch hotel, at least one on the east side.
They want to get the infrastructure there. We were to create a CFT to put sewer. That would maybe facilitate not only hotels, but other commercial development. But I think that'd be something to look forward to.
Just a thought.
All right. Anything else?
That's it. I knew it would generate.
Sorry.
Yeah, I don't get it.
You were right.
All right, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here tonight. Good meeting. I'm going to adjourn for September 4, 2018 at 5 o'clock. Thank you.